But that could be fun.
Hey Josh.
Yes.
Got some big pictures of fish that I got today I'll have to show you.
Yeah, I'd like to see them. I gotta, I gotta make it up to talk to you anyway.
Everyone I'm over thirty pounds.
Wow.
Holy moly.
Where?
Um, off the coast of New Jersey. My grandson's fishing today.
Goodness.
Well, we're getting close now, aren't we guys?
I have seven o'clock.
It's on Indiana Avenue, Belltime six fifty-nine.
Yeah. A little bit faster over here on East Side.
Yeah, the sun's already set over there.
Make sure you stop the bridge to get your pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you gotta come across the bridge to get any hot dogs, don't you?
Hey, depends on who you know.
Well, true. All right, guys. Thanks for joining us. At this time, I'll call this Fairmont City Council Regular Meeting to Order, May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Would the Clerk please call the room?
Mayor Mayorfield?
Here.
Councilmember Rice?
Here.
Councilor Yan?
Here.
Councilor Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Blensel?
Here.
Councilmember Rob?
Here.
Councilor Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Manella?
Here.
Councilwoman Rob?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the prayer from Reverend Robin Norsworthi. Is Robin here tonight?
I emailed her today to remember.
Robin?
Oh, is Dee Dee here? There's Dee Dee.
Can I remind, can I please remind everyone to mute your mics unless you're speaking? So we can eliminate some of the feedback if possible. Thank you.
Hey Dee Dee, it looks like you just joined the meeting, but Robin's not here. Did she give you a copy of the prayer? Okay, do you think you could make one up? Did Dee Dee leave?
You need to unmute Dee Dee.
Is that, am I muted now?
You're okay now.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you be so kind as to give us a blessing?
All right, thank you. Lord, you come to us in mysterious ways. We sense your invisibility and yet visibility through the airwaves, through the TV and the internet. And you come to us in our hearts and in our minds. The Lord grant unto the city council the wisdom for this new venture, for the opportunity to continue to seek the good of the city as a place for the city of God to reside in, watch over all those who are affected by the pandemic, and help us in our own individual ways and in our corporate ways to do what we can do. We're with the meeting now, and we hope there's no flaws. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dee Dee.
You're welcome, sir.
At this time, Councilmember Rice, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Josh. At this time, we need to approve the meetings. And so much as we typically do not have any adjustments or corrections to those, we have three different meetings to approve. Does anyone have any particular meeting that they're going to bring forth? So that we can do them in a block, or do we need to do them individually? Okay, okay. Well, if-
It's acceptable. We accept the minutes of all three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Everyone that agrees to accept all three groups of minutes without any changes or corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meetings are accepted as written. Thank you for that. This time, want to mention and read a statement here. This is, this is National Police Week. And I want to read a little statement here that was put together that Valerie sent to me that I thought was very comprehensive and appropriate at this time. No matter which police group you might be talking about. Police Week is a time when we as a country come together and honor those brave men and women and law enforcement who have lost their lives while serving their communities. We also recognize the tremendous sacrifices that law enforcement officers make for us, all of us, every day, and their families. While Police Week is typically a time to come together to share memories and stories and honor our friends who have made the ultimate sacrifice, the impacts of COVID nineteen have required that these commemorations be moved into a virtual environment this year. To quote the President's Police Week proclamation, "Law enforcement officials have never wavered in the face of crisis or tragedy. During uncertain times, law enforcement officers bravely face challenges and continue to protect the American people. They steadfastly ensure the safety of our communities, providing a much-needed sense of security for our citizens and our country is extremely grateful for their efforts." These are the fact, these are in fact uncertain times, but what remains certain is that the cops' office unwavering support for law enforcement. We are committed to delivering grants and resources to keep the men and women in law enforcement safe, even as we navigate- Law enforcement are the most essential employees and do not have the luxury of social distancing and staying at home. Our support for them must not wane during these challenging times. As we cannot gather as a community and light our candles on the National Mall this year, the National Law Enforcement Office Memorial Fund will hold a virtual candlelight vigil on Wednesday, May thirteenth, at eight o'clock PM Eastern Time. This year, three hundred seventy more names are being engraved on those walls. On May thirteenth, the National Law Enforcement Office Memorial Fund will livestream its thirty-second annual candlelight vigil to read aloud each of the names of those three hundred seven brave men and women in respect, honor, and remembrance. I just, as, as I'm sure I speak for all of council, we just, we've said it many times before, and I think our actions show maybe even more than our words on things that we've done and could do. But I just wanted to take a moment to, to speak out on honoring those, those folks that without them, we'd, we'd be in a heck of a fix. Okay. Public announcements, public hearings, we have no, we have no public hearings this week. As far as announcements, Councilmember Rice, do you have anything?
I have no announcements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kennedy?
I have a concern, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
With this, with this situation, it might be, it might be necessary for council to have an emergency meeting. And, and that would be an emergency. I'm, I'm asking the city manager and you to set up the mechanics for that, so it, if it, if it is necessary to do that, that, that it could be expedited quickly.
Oh, okay. Do we need to know what, addressing what?
Well, if, if we would have to have an emergency meeting, we, we have two meetings a month. It's possible we might have to have an emergency meeting outside of those two regularly scheduled meetings. And, and now that the newspaper is shutting down its production two or three days a week, that, that vehicle isn't really going to be there to notify the public. So some adjustment needs to be done if, if we have to, if we have to get together for some reason.
Okay, you're saying to adjust the rules with the advance notice and whatnot. Valerie, can you speak to that? Where do we stand now? Because we can have, we can call that meeting now, but I know what Dave's saying that-
Yeah, we have the, yeah, we do have the ability to call additional meetings. And we would just have to make sure that, you know, timing is right on that. Janet had brought this to our attention already about the, the newspaper, so we do want to make sure that we keep things timely and we're able to still get our notices in on time. So we, we could possibly have to have some in-between meetings.
Would we have to change?
We have that ability to do that already, as far as I understand.
Would we have to change the rules, though, in order to do that? I think that's what-
I don't believe so, no.
So we can use social media?
Let me not use the word emergency. Let me use the word additional meeting.
Yes, special meetings you could have. We already have the ability to do that.
Right.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
But thank you for thinking of that, because that's something that we were already reviewing. Thank you.
Good deal. Anything else? Brad, you missed-
Not for me. No.
Okay. Yeah, I missed. Yeah, I'm trying to go for memory, Frank. I forgot you were number two. Go ahead, buddy. I have nothing. You have nothing?
No.
Okay. Sorry about that. Forgot who we're sitting where. It's hard to see you guys on this. Tom? You're muted, but you're, you're saying you don't have anything.
Everything.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
No, too.
Let's see, Dora?
Yes. A lot of people know this woman, Melva Hess. Celebrated her hundred and second birthday yesterday.
Yes.
I thought this was very unique. They had planned a large party for her, but it was impossible to have because what is going on? So they lined up with the county sheriff, the police department, the fire department, and over fifty-three cars met and drove up around her house with signs and cards and honking and all that type of things and things written on the side of the car, which I think the people, a lot of people were really coming out looking at and applauding. It had nothing to do with her, but it, that was kind of a unique way to celebrate something when we can no longer come face to face with them.
Yeah.
And Melva is a very special person in town also.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay, Donna? Phil? Well, I think-
Can you hear me?
Okay, Donna, you're unmuted. I just was, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Phil? You need to unmute? There you go.
Hear me? Okay.
Yes, sir.
A child next door to where we, had a, I think, a fifth birthday. And of course, everything was locked down, shut out. No kids could come over. But she had a sign out in front of her house to wish the child a happy birthday. And a police cruiser, a city cruiser, stopped by, turned on his siren, honked a horn, made all kinds of great noise, and it made her, it made her birthday, so.
It's great to hear.
Yeah, I wanted to send that out in appreciation for the police department.
Yeah, great. Okay. Thank you. Barry?
I think we should do this more often. I like this, doing this from the deck. I just wanted to mention two things, and they're both related, but involve different groups of people, but with this being National Police Week and next week is National EMS Week, I really want to give a shout out to the police, the firefighters and EMS, because there really isn't anybody more on the front lines of this than they are. They're literally face to face, hand to hand with somebody they're arresting. Trying to save a life of somebody who may not be breathing. And they are really, literally on the front lines, more than anybody else, and I just want to give them a shout out. Same thing goes with people who aren't on the front lines, but are really going above and beyond in our, in our city, which is our IT people who have really worked hard to get things like this going. Valerie, who I know, you know, who knew when she took this job, this would be part of her duties, and it's probably doubled her workload and made it harder for her to do the things she needs to get done. And, and not just there, there's, there's others, but those in particular come to mind. I just want to say thank you to all of them.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree with you, Barry, and I think maybe when things open up a little bit more, I think there's a lot of people that, that don't get mentioned that every day, I mean, how many of you think when we go to the grocery store that those things would be on the shelf? You know, and people that work at the gas stations and, you know, the Republic folks. I mean, may, maybe we could do some type of public recognition for all those different job groups, because I, I think we just overlook it and take it for credit. Or, you know, take, and, and take it for granted, and I just think that they're, they're due to be mentioned, and you know, it's just, just my opinion, but as far as announcements, I don't think I have anything else different. So at this time, we have one citizen's petition, and I'll call on Rebecca Polis. You have five minutes to address council. If you can give us your name and your address, please.
Sure, Rebecca Polis, and that's eight eighteen Coleman Avenue in Fairmont, West Virginia.
Thank you. Okay, you may proceed. You've got five minutes.
First of all, thank you all so very much for everything you do. I know it's a challenging job. Making decisions always is. I haven't walked where you walk, but I sure do appreciate what you all do. So I am a candidate for West Virginia Senate in District thirteen. I, I want to be a voice for values. I want to tell you a little bit about my life. First of all, I'm married to John Polis for forty-five years. He's a Vietnam Purple Heart veteran. We have four children and eight grandchildren. And people have asked me, why are you running right now? You could retire, you could do this, you could do that, but two things. Number one, I love West Virginia. I grew up in Calhoun County. And be, and because of that, and West Virginia's been good to me, and I believe in payback. And I believe I can bring something to West Virginia and to our district. I believe I can serve and help and, and cause things to be better. That's why I'm running. And the second thing is, of course, my grandchildren. I believe I can be a voice for grandparents. I believe I can be a voice for parents who are deeply concerned about the future of their children and the future prosperity of their children in this state, and for that matter, across the nation. But I'm here, and I care about West Virginia. So a survey done by George Barna and David Barton, as published in the book U-Turn, shows that sixty-three percent of those surveyed believe that America is in a state of decline and that it's headed in the wrong direction. I'm a graduate of Calhoun County. I have a master's degree in strategic leadership. I'm a certified counselor and a life coach. I've functioned in business, just so you know a little bit about my business background. I've been a distributor of plans and specifications of one of the largest architectural firms in Florida. I've been an administrator of a twenty-two acre apartment complex in North Carolina. And I've been the coordinator of trucking and site management for a manufacturing company. And so I've worked with my husband as well for over forty years, pastoring churches, teaching, counseling, both locally and internationally. We've started Bible colleges together, both here and internationally. I've been a local and a national TV host. I've conducted annual women's conferences to educate and to empower women to a greater potential. Here are some of the things that I'm really concerned about right now that I value. I'm sure I'm an echo for you, but, and, but I want to express myself. I value education that implements more life skills that will lift our children into a place of confidence and knowledgeable citizenship. I, I, I really value more trade schools in addition to colleges to empower them to make a choice that will enable them to face the future, knowing they can provide for a family without leaving the state of West Virginia. I value women's potential and women reaching their potential through a greater awareness of non-traditional and traditional roles and, and training so that they can produce a higher-than-average woman's salary today that they are experiencing. I value addiction recovery. I will help, I will work to help research and implement more proven rehabilitation programs for those struggling with opiates and all drugs. And I will work to see an increase in prescription availability, accountability. I'll work for reductions in excess taxes that hinder new businesses from locating here. I value opportunities for employment, for education through trade schools that are so necessary today. Have you ever tried to get a plumber at the last minute, or an electrician, or a roofer? We need more trade schools. I value family development. I support less expensive but thoroughly vetted adoption programs, greater protection and restoration programs for domestic violence victims. I'm endorsed by the West Virginians for Life. I'm pro-life, and I'm a pro-Second Amendment gun rights person. I'll work to see the Road to Prosperity program completed. I'll support the increase of broadband coverage in our counties that is so necessary for our children's education and for our growth and economy. When I Googled broadband in West Virginia, I discovered out of our many counties that, that I think there were at least twelve that were under fifty percent coverage. They need to be covered. If we're going to bring businesses in, we've got to have better coverages. Our children are suffering right now because they don't have better coverage with broadband, so I'm asking for your vote.
Okay.
I'm asking for your vote, a voice for values that will better West Virginia. Learn more about me at my face, my website at polisforwvsenate.com or my Facebook page, Rebecca Polis for WV Senate twenty twenty. I went blank. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
No, you're fine, and you're, you're right on time, so thank you so much for addressing us. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for taking, for giving me the time. I appreciate you all.
And good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Blessings to you tonight. Bye-bye.
Thank you. This time, Valerie, do you have a city manager's report?
Yeah, I have a few comments, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to ditto some of the comments that were made earlier. Just a big thank you to all the city workers, really in all departments. I mean, basically, your city government is, is essential, and if they're not out face to face, they're in, they're behind the scenes in other departments doing work to make sure that we keep providing services to our citizens. I just want to thank them for the fantastic and dedicated job that they have done throughout all of this. They always perform very well, but in this crisis, they have really shown how they can really come out and, and be the best that they could be. I also want to thank all other essential city workers, as many of you have done as well, throughout our community. So again, just thank everyone for that. Also, for Police Week, you know, I also pause for a moment to remember all of those who have lost their life in service, and hopefully, maybe if our meeting is done by eight, some of us can jump on that virtual recognition that they're having. Okay, just on one other thing, I'd like to talk a little bit about plans for reopening the city administrative offices. We've been closed, I think, since, I want to say since March, maybe nineteenth or twentieth. So I, first of all, want to thank all the citizens for being very patient with us and utilizing other, other means to get work done that they needed, like for permits or, or something else, so. But I'm sure that that's caused a little bit of a difficulty for some of the citizens, so I want to thank them for utilizing those sources. So I am finalizing plans to begin to open city offices on a modified schedule. So beginning next week, Monday, the eighteenth, through the end of the month, we're going to allow walk-in traffic for our code and our permits and our finance offices. And then as far as other appointments for other city offices, they'll need to be made by appointment. So I will be sending out the details in that in a press release, probably tomorrow, if not that Friday for sure. Friday morning for sure. So hopefully, if all goes well with everything that we're trying to do and everything that the governor's trying to do for the state over the next several weeks, the plan would be to open full-time with no appointments necessary, just complete walk-in traffic by June first. We're also going to issue a press release for our customer service center over on Merchant Street. It'll be similar, a modified schedule, trying to reach a June first full opening. To this date, we still do not have full guidance on opening up, on fully opening up our parks. So that, I'm still working with Lloyd White, our Health Department Director, to get guidance on that. So as soon as I have information on the parks, we'll make sure that we get that done as well. And I believe that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Sounds like you've been a little busy.
Yeah, we've been busy, but I want to get back to all the other good stuff that we want to do, all the, all the projects and the things that kind of came to a standstill. So staff and I are ready to get back to those projects, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to do that soon.
Yes, we as well, and sometimes, unfortunately, life gets in the way.
That's right.
Valerie?
Everyone's been doing well.
Yeah, Phil here. Any word at all or updates on revenue shrinking as a result of the virus?
No, I don't. I don't have any further information on that. A lot of our revenues come in quarterly. So we are looking at that. Of course, we're constantly watching cash flow to make sure that things are fine. And as of right now, things are looking okay, but I don't have any detailed update on that.
And aren't, aren't we waiting to see what the federal laws, how they're done as far as will we get reimbursed or not, and how the hell all that works? I mean, isn't all that in, still in play?
That is in play, but we, you know, we always want to be conservative and to assume we're not going to get the reimbursement.
Of course.
So, you know, we are looking at that. We're trying to- You know, the, the problem is, a lot of our revenues, a lot of our biggest sources, such as the BNO tax, those come in on a quarterly basis. Our last quarter, we were pleasantly surprised that we did not have a decrease. So, you know, it's just one of those things, we don't know how it's going to impact us, because, you know, where you have some categories, say, of BNO who are, are going to be reduced, there's other categories that are going up, and whether it's because of higher prices or if it's because of online, online retail, we just don't know that yet, so it's very hard to kind of judge that. Things like, things like the ad valorem tat, you know, those things should not change, because obviously, properties are still held. So, you know, again, we're just trying to look at that. We're on a call with fellow city managers and fellow, you know, just fellow mayors and cities, and all of us are struggling with that same thing, because we want to, we want to be conservative, but at the same time, we don't want to cause a full panic.
Sure.
Again, we just take it day by day. I can't, when, I can actually give you a number, Councilman Mason. It's hard to say when I'll be able to just say, hey, we're, we have this shortfall. But I think, you know, over the next few months, we should be able to estimate that better. The thing about it is, now we're opening up again, so if, if we really open and things go well and things start flowing again, then we really only had about eight or nine weeks of a decline. So that impact will be much less than if this goes on. So again, we're just, you know, looking at it every day.
Yeah, and I just might mention that Main Street is definitely working on some things, trying to generate traffic and, and interest once the downtown- trying to generate traffic and interest once the downtown businesses are given the opening, you know, the full opening sign, so I know a lot of people are concerned and interested in trying to, but, you know, it's a little tough right now.
It is, it is.
I know everyone's concerned about that, about the revenue shrinkage, not just council but citizens as well, and I would imagine the second quarter is going to be kind of a tough quarter.
Right.
So I know we won't be surprised if that is the case.
Valerie? This-
Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah.
There you are.
Yes, yes, Frank.
These-
Good to see you, Frank.
All-star senators, I got a little confused. This money that the governor has not released, is that going to be of any benefit to us? Do we get, yeah, I sort of took from Joe that it should be released. I sort of, she was breaking up a good bit today, Senator Capito, and she was saying, well, the governor's under these certain restraints, so what do you feel about this money that he's sitting on down there? And I understand it's $1.25 billion?
Right.
Yes, it is, Councilman, and there were federal guidelines that were issued, I would say, I don't know, maybe three or four weeks ago, that explain exactly how that money is to be used initially, and there would be some reimbursements for the city, but as of now, that money cannot be used to reimburse revenue loss. So it's been this revenue loss question that we've been, that we've been most concerned about, but part of that money, we would be able to get reimbursed for things like any additional expenses that we had, like for purchasing protective equipment or for sanitizers or anything additional that we would have spent, additional, even additional payroll items such as additional overtime, some of those things would be able to be reimbursed with that money, but we are supposed to get guidelines from the governor's office either the end of this week or the beginning of next week that shows, you know, the application, you know, how we would go about getting that. Now, we've been tracking expenses from, since the day this started. All the departments are tracking any kind of additional expenses or additional overtime, so that's, those sort of things we would be able to be reimbursed. At this time, we would not be able to be reimbursed revenue loss.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consideration-
Hey, Mayor, can I-
I'm sorry.
Can I make a belated announcement?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead. We've got a time delay. I'm not used to it. Go ahead.
Momentous occasion just occurred. My wife walked into the room where I am, and the first time in the 14 years I've been on council, she's ever attended a meeting, even though it was inadvertent.
Well- Yeah, I saw her back there.
Hi, Joyce. Yeah, she's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hi, Joyce.
I'm happy, you know. After 14 years, she finally showed up.
Well, that's worthy of mention.
Okay, all right. Sorry about the distraction.
Okay, no problem, man. Okay, moving on to consideration of council business. First agenda item number one is for the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing. Is there a motion and a second?
No move.
Josh, is there a second?
Second.
Tom and Tom. Okay, would the clerk please read the ordinance by synopsis?
An ordinance of the council of the city of Fairmont amending and supplementing ordinance number 1840 duly adopted November 26, 2019, which ordinance provides for the city of Fairmont's current pay plan and list of occupational classes for all classed titles and employees to accommodate certain changes, namely, a 1.5% base pay increase for all classed titles will increase in the certification pay for certain employees and increase in the fire prevention and training officer special assignment pay and providing for certification pay for firefighters with a joint apprenticeship training committee certification. By this proposed ordinance, the council for the city of Fairmont provides for the following modification to the city's existing pay plan, which was adopted by ordinance 1840, which modifications have been recommended by the city manager, and increase of a 1.5% pay class grades and class pay titles, increase in certain certification pay for nonrepresented and non-exempt employees, nonrepresented exempt employees, and employees not otherwise provided for, department heads, and increase in the fire prevention and training officer special assignment pay from $8,000 to $10,000, and providing for certification pay for firefighters with a joint apprenticeship committee, JATC certification, of $200 per year following presentation of a valid JATC certificate. Notwithstanding the effective date of the ordinance, the increases provided for by the proposed ordinance shall not be applicable to any pay until the first full pay period beginning on or after July 1, 2020.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, all in favor of setting this public hearing, say aye.
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 Can we, discussion, Mayor?
Not for this, not to set the public hearing, no, sir.
Okay.
That would be out of order. Well, we'll have our chance. So the motion carries. The public hearing will be set for-
May 26.
May 26?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, would it be appropriate to have some comment?
No, not on that. No, it's, there's no discussion on that part of it, Phil, sorry.
On the introduction.
On the introduction, there's not. That's just-
You told me the first reading. You'll have your chance to try to-
Right. Oh, yeah, there'll be plenty of discussion the next meeting. The agenda item number two is for the introduction, first reading, and to set a public hearing on an ordinance. Is there a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, would the clerk please read the ordinance by synopsis?
An ordinance authorizing the renewal of a certain letter of credit number 2001-525 issued by West Banco Bank to the city of Fairmont for purposes of satisfying the portion of the self-insured security and insurance requirements of the West Virginia Workers' Compensation Act. By this proposed ordinance, the council for the city of Fairmont authorizes and approves the renewal of the West Banco Irrevocable Letter of Credit, number 2001-525, and further authorizes the city manager or her designee to do all things reasonable and necessary in connection with, including full power and authority to execute and deliver on behalf of the city of Fairmont any and all necessary documents and to pay any and all necessary premiums. The Irrevocable Letter of Credit fulfills a portion of the city's self-insurance requirements under the West Virginia Workers' Compensation Act to provide security and insurance to protect against the risks associated with injuries arising in the course and scope of employment, including the risk of catastrophic injury.
Thank you, Janet. All in favor of setting a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion carries. The public hearing will be set for May 26? Is it, Janet?
Yes, May 26.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, agenda item number three is for the adoption of a resolution. Is there a motion and a second?
No move.
Okay, would the clerk please read the resolution by synopsis?
A resolution to reschedule the regularly scheduled city council meeting of Tuesday, June 9, 2020 to Wednesday, June 10, 2020, due to June 9, 2020 being recognized as a legal holiday. That the city of Fairmont hereby resolves that the regularly scheduled council meeting fixed on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., is hereby rescheduled to Wednesday, June 10, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., due to June 9 being recognized as a legal holiday. This resolution is adopted pursuant to Council's Rules of Order and Procedure, Section 1.3.
Thanks, Janet. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Yan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes. Declare this resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Phil, do you have a motion? You're muted. I think you're muted.
I move we adjourn. I'm sorry, very good meeting. I thought it went very smoothly. Nice job from IT as well as you, Mayor.
Yes. The IT's the guy.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Buddy, good to see you all. Good to see you.
We are adjourned.
Good to see everyone.
Good night.
40, Janet, 7:30. Don't forget to send me that stuff, Josh.
Take care, everyone.
I will also, Frank.
Joyce said she really enjoyed the meeting. She might come again 14 years from now.
Okay, all right.
I'm still on council 14 years from now. She'll be here.
Oh, I'm sure she will be. Bye, everybody.
Janet and Donna and Doris-
Bye, guys.
Hang around, just hang around, talk to each other.
We cooked the supper's ready.
Oh, so, yeah, I gotta go, I gotta go to supper.
Oh, yeah.
I'm cooking a steak. Joyce already cooked some.
Is that what you do when it's time to eat?
We got one steak. We're going to split it. They're hard.
Yeah, okay, good. Take care. Be safe, everybody.
All right, goodbye, everybody.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye.